All right.
I'll get her advice.
Five. All right, and five, four, three, two, one.
Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting this Monday, December 14. This meeting is being recorded for LCTV, being aired live, and being livestreamed at longmeadow.org. If we can begin with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Long Meadow School Committee maintains educational policies that foster continuous improvement by challenging and supporting all children in a safe, caring, learning environment, enabling them to reach their highest potential and to become productive citizens. Through effective communication and positive relationships, the Long Meadow School Committee will make informed decisions in the best interest of the students, the schools, and the Long Meadow community. Correspondence?
There is correspondence for this meeting. A memo from the Lower Pioneer Valley Career and Technical Education Center dated November 4th regarding Walter E. Quigley Jr., Student of the Month for November 2015. There are no Long Meadow students recognized for November.
We don't have any visitors this evening, so I'll go straight to school committee comments. John?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the superintendent search committee for their excellent work in sifting through the candidates that applied for the position here as superintendent. And although I was not on the original committee, being able to view their work on Saturday, when we were all in here from about eight in the morning until close to five at night, I was impressed with the questions asked and the concern that was shown by these people. So I want to publicly thank them.
Yes, I would most second, you know, secondly, wholeheartedly agree with you on that.
Me as well.
Any other school committee comments? All right. Seeing none, we'll jump straight into old business, which is the superintendent's search update. As John indicated, the subcommittee met Saturday and interviewed six finalists, or semifinalists, that were brought forward by the original committee. And after deliberation, the names of three were selected to be brought forward as our finalist candidates, who will be interviewed on Thursday, December 17th, starting at 5:00 PM in this room. And before I give any more information, I'll go ahead and release the names.
Finally.
Finally, they are listed alphabetically out of no, you know, bias or prior, you know, rankings. So our first candidate is Dr. Neil Guile, principal of Wolf Swamp Road School here in Long Meadow. Our second finalist is Ms. Catherine Minahan, and she is the, I want to make sure I get her title correct, the Associate Superintendent for Strategy and Accountability for the Evansville Vanderburg School Corporation of Evansville, Indiana. And the third finalist is Mr. Marty O'Shea from the Hamden-Wilbraham School District. So it was, it was tough to come down to three candidates as all six were very qualified. So those are the three people who we will be interviewing on Thursday. In our meeting last Monday, the school committee did vote to hold a meet and greet session for these three candidates. The members of the public may come and visit with them. Due to the timing of the interview process, the meet and greet will be held from 4:00 to 5:00 PM prior to the commencements of the interviews. Each of these candidates will be in a separate location. I believe we have Room 812, which is the room down the hall here from us, the Pupil Services Conference Room, which is across the hall, and the BTC of the high schools. So people can come, members of the public can come, meet one, meet all, ask informal questions before the candidates will be interviewed. They will each be interviewed for about an hour, hour and 15 minutes. Each school committee member has submitted two interview questions that they will ask at that meeting. And then after the three interviews have taken place, then deliberation amongst the school committee in open session will occur. So I do know that the question was raised that for Thursday night, would the school committee like Sue and Tom present? I believe that you were both, or your roles were both present at the last superintendent's search. And they asked, should they, would our committee like them to be present Thursday evening? So I wanted to open that up to the committee.
Based on Sue's reaction, I'm inclined to say yes.
Sue has contributed quite a lot of time to the superintendent's search since Tom volunteered her. But I didn't know if the, if the committee felt that they would be helpful in answering any questions or concerns. Michelle?
I think if you want to come, I would love to have you, but I think you both work so hard on this and that would be my.
John?
Okay, it's not going to be a regular meeting, anyway. It's the only business that's going to be discussed.
No, the only business on the agenda is the interviews and the deliberation that follows.
Give them the night off. Well, they've given us a lot of night's work, so.
If they want to come, they can.
Well, they're free to come.
Yeah, free to come.
Michael?
If you don't want to be here, you don't have to be.
They're looking more excited.
I don't think it's that they don't want to be here. We want to, if we're going to be here, we want to know that we're going to be helpful.
Right.
Or would you rather deliberate on your own, totally?
Yeah, I think that's more the question. Do you want any input from us?
Right.
To be part of the process? If not, I'm happy as they are. If you want me here and what they can put, be glad that.
I kind of view it, since we're not curriculum or finance experts, you know, if questions are raised or the way a particular candidate answers a question, that we're looking for clarification. And I can reference Saturday's meeting. I know Sue, you, and some of the principal, the principal and some of the teachers were helpful in kind of answering questions that, that members of the committee didn't know in terms of how things were done procedurally or, or who sits on an admin team or who, you know, just answering general questions. I don't know, I think it would be beneficial just in terms of, you know, if we question anything a candidate comments on about curriculum, you know, I'm not a curriculum expert. You know, same with finance. So that's the only reason that I would think to ask you, ask, request your presence that evening.
From five to 10. What if they're on?
We tried that last meeting, I think.
Would you be able to be on call? So if we wanted to?
I think we just, I, um, yeah, we'll just call.
Okay.
I think it's better.
All right, well, thank you.
Sue, this was your chance to volunteer Tom to be here, but.
Tom will be here, and I will be on call.
All right, any other questions regarding? At the end of this meeting, the packets with the candidates' information and the questions for interviewing that were compiled by Ray and Associates, each member will go home with this evening so that they can review and prepare for Thursday evening. Just so that's clear, because I know you were all waiting on your packets. Any other questions about the search process?
Yeah, my understanding of the interview questions is that we were going to get them and have some type of conversation about whether they're all going to go forward or not. How are we going to do that if we get it at the end of the meeting?
No, that was discussed at last Monday's meeting, and it was via email when Ray and Associates had sent to me that they had gotten such a plethora. And when Ryan told me over 60 questions from, from all of us submitted, they didn't feel comfortable narrowing it down to choosing, well, you know, we like this question versus this question, because they felt everybody had a valid right to ask questions, which is why I sent the email that each member of the committee should submit to and that Ray and Associates was reviewing them for duplication and for legality. And there are two questions, two members whose questions were duplicates of another member's, so I'll speak with those two members about submitting an alternate question. But then those questions will just be provided back to us and those, whoever wrote the question will be presenting the question. That's what I had communicated with you all.
Okay, but what we talked about with Ray and Associates is that they were going to provide it to us so that we would have it to start this meeting. So if we had to talk about it, we could. I mean, that was my understanding of this process.
That was the, what we discussed at that Monday night meeting. And then the subsequent communications that I had with them, which I forwarded on to you all, was that they changed that.
Okay, but unless we tell them to change something, I mean, that's my problem with the whole process that we've had is that, I mean, for the committee to find out who the final three are at the same time that everybody else does, I mean, I have no idea who these people are at this point, so we just found out. I don't like that the consulting firm is dictating how we're doing things. We had a decision at the last meeting. Now you're telling me the consulting firm decided to change things in the middle, which I understood the two questions makes complete sense, but I didn't think that changed the fact that we'd have some opportunity to talk about it.
But it was also brought up at Monday night's meeting that the only way that we could discuss interview questions were in open session, and the committee did not feel that they wanted to discuss questions that candidates could be listening in on and releasing those questions prior.
I didn't think.
We cannot call an executive session to discuss those interview questions.
I didn't think we'd do that. I thought what we'd do is confirm that we agree those questions are fine to go forward. That was the whole idea. I mean, that's what we talked about.
Okay. Any, any other input?
Well, I, I am surprised that we don't have the packets yet. I don't know why we don't have access to them. So in case there's something that we want to talk about, we can.
Be, and the reason we had agreed that the names would be released at this meeting, which I just did.
Well, I disagree that, that the school committee was finding out now. I thought we had discussed that the school committee, if they wanted to, could find out who the three finalists were as long as they remained confidential until now. So I, you know, we talked about that in executive session, that, you know, you don't agree with that, but I don't know why.
We haven't had an executive session regarding.
I'm saying in our executive session on Saturday, you mentioned that we didn't discuss that. And I don't understand, first off, why the committee had to find out at the same time as the public about this, about our three finalists. What was the reason for that?
That's what was discussed at our meeting on Monday.
I don't remember it that way.
Well, because we said we didn't want to wait until Thursday to find because we wanted the information. So today was the only day that we could get their names.
Right, we said we'd make it public.
That's what we said.
I, I mentioned that people could call if they wanted to, Ryan, so it wasn't going outside of open meeting law and find out the names then, as soon as they were available.
Did you call Ryan?
I knew them because I was there.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
But I, I don't understand why the rest of the committee wasn't given that information. That was one of the reasons why I voted against having just three of us on the committee versus all of us. I think everyone should have equal access to the information.
And I believe that the consultant and our admin team has explained that had we had, the only way that all of us could have known the names of the six semifinalists would to be conduct those interviews in open session. And the consultant and our own administrators had said that that would be detrimental as candidates would drop out, knowing that their names were public in a semifinalist round versus a finalist round.
That's not the point I'm making, though. There was ways for the other committee members to find out information and.
And I communicated those questions to Ray and Associates, and their answers were that they were not releasing the names of the six because they felt it compromised the integrity of confidentiality that they promised to the candidates and the, the integrity of the confidentiality that they asked the subcommittee to hold up to.
Well, we had information on the nine candidates to begin with, so.
Some people did, not every committee member.
Everyone was given invitation to come in and get it.
But not everybody chose to.
So they didn't care to. But the people that did came in and got the names. So, but then from that point on, those, they knew the nine names. Why couldn't they find out who the six were and who the three were?
That would be a question for Ray and Associates.
Well, no, I mean, we hired them. We could have told them that we got that information, but you didn't want to ask them for that.
No, I asked them for that information.
You did.
I did. If you would like to see, I will forward you the emails in which I requested that.
Thank you. And again, I had asked that I was copied on all of the email correspondence for the superintendent's search, but.
I've copied everyone on committee. If, if an individual member asks a question, I respond to that individual. I don't copy everyone because that's violation of open meeting law.
Any correspondence between you and Ray and Associates about the superintendent's search would have been violation of open, if we weren't responding back, but we were just watching the emails that came through?
I was, my correspondence to Ray and Associate was on a particular question that a single school committee member asked. So that single school committee member was copied on it? Not everyone. So perhaps I misunderstood that if a single committee member was communicating that the entire committee wanted to be copied. Russ?
Well, what Michelle indicated in the email is that any correspondence with Ray and Associates back and forth was going to be copied to all of us. It had nothing to do with one person's question or the whole committee's questions. But the biggest problem I have is that if we want to do something a certain way, then we talk as a committee, we're a whole group. So if it's going to, if we don't want to do it, we don't want to know who the six are, we don't want to know who the three are, that's fine as a committee. But Ray and Associates doesn't make the decision for us. It's not their call, that's our call. So it's fine, if the committee decide we don't want to know the six names, I'm perfectly fine with that. But I'm not perfectly fine with Ray and Associates saying.
If I could, though, isn't that what Ryan and Associates said to us? They were going to keep those six names confidential. It's because three of them did not make that cut on, you know, that we produced on Saturday.
Yeah.
So they want to, for various reasons, maintain confidentiality of their application. And so, and Ryan Associates and Ray Associates delivered on their promise. It was kept. I don't see any reason to release the six names.
No, I'm not saying now.
If that's what someone wants to do.
Yeah, no.
Oh, no, I'm not asking for that at this point.
I was asking back when the six were announced. I wanted to know who the six were, which we could have done just by contacting Ray and Associates and then look to see who they were and what, you know, actually do some background, you know, checks on them. But I wasn't given the opportunity because Ray and Associates didn't want to provide the information, even though I knew who the nine were. So really, at that point, I don't understand the confidentiality issue, but.
But isn't that moot right now? We've got three, and only three, that we can consider. If you want to look at the.
Yeah, no, I don't want to look at the six now.
I would assume, since the decision is passed, you could, you could look at it. I don't know.
Yeah, no, my, my concern is that as a committee, we all need to know the same things at the same time. We have to work as a committee. And people we hire to do a job for us, which I think Ray and Associates has done the job that we asked them to do. But they're not making the decisions for us. I mean, ultimately, we're the committee. If we decide we don't like what they've said, then I think we should talk about it and vote. The way the timelines worked out, and, and I couldn't get a special meeting together because we didn't have a quorum, we didn't talk about it. The interview questions, we talked about, and we were supposed to bring it up today, and now Ray and Associates or you, I don't know, is saying we're going to wait until the end of the meeting. That's not, that was not the plan.
I ask, so we also talked on Monday about the interview questions, and we don't want to talk about them because we don't want the candidates to know what we're asking.
Yeah.
So how, what do you, I don't understand what you're saying.
The only thing that we had talked about doing is we'd get the slated questions, and as long as none of us had any issues, we don't talk about it at all. It would be simply, you know, we saw the interview questions, they look reasonable, let's go forward. That's all I wanted to do.
That's all you want to do right now.
That's what I wanted to do. I didn't want to review each one. Now, we're not doing that, and I guess it's because Ray and Associates doesn't want us to. I don't see why. And I don't think it's worth spending a lot more time on this issue, but I will say that moving forward as a committee, I mean, we make the decisions. It's our, this is our process. We're making, this is the biggest decision we make. So I want to make sure that we have a reasonable process to make it happen. I mean, right now, these three, I'm sure they're good candidates, but I don't know anything about them. So we're going to have to scramble the look in the next few days and figure out, you know, who they are and what the resumes look like, which I guess we're not getting until the end of the meeting.
Yeah, but that was always going to be the case that we discussed, even if we're not getting until the end of the meeting, we always discussed that we were going to get that information today.
The difference is, I asked for the six because I would have looked at those six. And then it wouldn't have mattered who the three were because I would have already known. I mean, at this point, I saw nine. I don't even remember the names of the nine. You know, so it was, it was difficult to go back and try to actually look at these people. I just want to make sure that, you know, when everybody's qualified. I'm sure the preliminary screening committee did all this. You know, I mean, the problem is, I don't, I haven't seen what their conclusions were. This is the first time I've seen it. It's irrelevant now. I think the process moves forward. We decide who we want. You know, it's, it's simply, I think, moving forward when we make decisions like this, it's just, you know, I, I think the whole committee needs to be involved through the whole process.
I will just comment, we did, as a committee, choose to hire a consulting firm whose specialty is running a superintendent's search. And we need to let them do their job. We also chose a search committee of 15 very qualified community members, and we needed to let them do their job. I, you know, while you're making the argument that Ray and Associates could have given us the six, we hired them. As a company, that was their decision not to release them. Yeah, they're a consulting firm. You know, they, they do hiring. They know what they need to protect from their applicant or for their applicants in order to maintain a successful search. I don't think that it's fair to question their decision-making. I mean, we, we did hire them. And my understanding is, in hiring a search firm, you're, you're letting them do the work and using their expertise. And whether, I, I'm not sure what information would be gained, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but the subcommittee interviewed the six, the subcommittee made the recommendation. If every school committee member had the names of the six, it wouldn't quite frankly matter whether you liked someone or didn't or thought someone was more qualified or not. That was the subcommittee's decision. So I understand you're frustrated that you didn't get the names of the six. That request was communicated to Ray and Associates. They had indicated that the school committee actually learning, setting up a meeting so that those interested could learn the names of the 47 who applied, who could find out the names of the nine, who were then narrowed down to six, is very irregular. And they honored that promise that was made by Dr. Rush. But they have said that when a school committee or a school board formulates a search committee, they then turn it over to the search committee and they are not involved in the micromanagement of the search. So I'm, you know, I apologize that, that you feel that way. Those requests were submitted. Michelle, I will copy you the, when the emails were sent and the responses from Ray and Associates. But, you know, as John, Michelle, and I all said, we thanked a search committee of 15 for, for the work and effort that they put in. I don't think it's fair now for members to sit and want to second guess their work because they wanted to look at the names of the six to see whether they, they agree with them or not.
You know very well, that's not what I'm saying, Janet. I'm not questioning the preliminary search committee at all, but as a committee, we should have known the six. We knew the nine.
Not all of us knew the nine.
But I'm not questioning Ray and Associates.
Not all of us chose to take place.
What I'm questioning is your ability to run the search in a way where Ray and Associates is actually responding to us as a client.
Okay. Any further questions on the search committee? For the superintendent's search?
Well, I just want to clarify that, that I wasn't second guessing the committee at all. I just think that being on it, I didn't have a lot of time to look through their resumes and their information because we were doing a lot of work at the same, we were interviewing while we had their information. It was a big packet. So I think it would be useful for the committee to be able to look through that, especially me, and read all the letters well and everything. And to not have the information until three days before we need to vote prevents that.
But no one on the subcommittee had.
Right.
Had that information either.
Right, so I'm saying if, if we could have done some research on our own at home using the internet, which is one of the reasons that the search firm said it's easier to, you know, choose candidates now because of the internet. But we couldn't do that without their names. So I, I, again, I wasn't, the, the point to having more information earlier was that it would have given us more time before choosing our final superintendent to research some of the candidates.
Can I, can I just say, when you went to see the nine, if you're saying that you didn't have time enough, why didn't you take those nine and look then? Which was like two weeks ago.
I couldn't write down their names.
You couldn't?
And you were waiting to come in.
Couldn't memorize?
No. We weren't allowed to take a picture, we weren't allowed to write down, and I didn't want to stay there and keep other people from coming in by reading it as thoroughly as I would have liked to.
Okay.
So, and the same thing with the meeting on Saturday.
But you know, this, this time thing, it's, it's not under our control. Like if we, yeah, we do have, we're under a time constraint. We don't have a lot of time to do our work, but we have to do it because we can't have their name out for that long. And it's the holidays, and we have to pick one. So we just have to suck it up and try to do our best.
Well, let's say there was something on a resume that we had a question about. It would have been good if we had it before now so we could look at it, and then we'd ask the question today so we get an answer before we interview them. I mean, that's really the type of thing I wanted to do. I think we all have the same interest, which is get the best person for the job. It's just, you know, we don't have another meeting to talk about. If there's any issues, which I don't think there are, but let's, let's say there was, you know, this would have been the day to do it, to talk about it, and we can't because we don't know what the resumes look like.
Could we not violate open meeting law but to get questions answered through emails individually then, before Thursday?
I think that's what we'd have to do. And probably the safest thing is to send it directly to the consultant. I mean, that would be the most reasonable way to do it.
Okay, let's just do that, then. And I'm just kind of rereading some of the notes that I took from that meeting we had last Monday. And originally, we were going to not get this information until the 17th because we didn't, and so we did agree to get it today. We, I never wrote down a specific time that we had agreed to get it on. I just see in my notes that we can get them to us for our meeting on the 14th if we want to review.
And part of that was that, the confidentiality piece and that Ray and Associates, you know, in giving candidates enough time and maintaining their confidentiality. And in fact, we were the ones who did tell them we wanted it before then, and, and that was what they had agreed to.
Yeah, I mean, we, we would prefer the candidates not know the questions ahead of time since we have our meeting and discuss in open session. We don't want to reveal questions prior to the interviews. I mean, I do have a little bit of back and forth conversations between people on here. And we don't ever mention when we were going to get it on the 14th. I just see that we mentioned that we were going to get it on the 14th. I just, I don't want to, you know, I, I agree that it's not ideal that we're getting it three days before, you know, I, I agree that it's not ideal that we're getting it three days before, but you don't want information leaked. Like, you know, we had discussed trying to get it earlier, two days earlier, but I, I don't know. I don't know what to say.
I think it's done with now. I mean, it's just, we just move forward and hire the best person we can. I mean, it's not a question of quality of candidates, it's just a question of, of the process that would've done differently.
John?
If I could, I, I thought Russ had a good point about if we see someone claiming they graduated or got a degree from some particular school, I'm under the assumption that Ray and Associates have vetted that.
That is the information that I have been given.
That's part of what we were paying them to do.
That's part of their consultant job, is.
So we should have a reasonable probability that what they have on those forms is true, and...
I have been told that their associates...
Because otherwise, each, each of us, it would be incumbent on each of us to contact all those schools, which doesn't seem very realistic, given the time span.
Should we confirm with them that they...
That is what they have stated, is that they, their associates in the office have contacted the, the references and the educational background. But I will get that in writing from them. I will send an email after this meeting.
Okay. No, I think that'd be, because you're asking a good question.
To ask the vetting process.
I don't want to bring someone forward based on an illusion.
Yeah, I mean, really what I was thinking, based on the nine, was, you know, that, make sure they have, are currently employed, which, you know, obviously is a question.
Which we definitely know two out of three are.
And, I mean, that's right.
So we definitely know that two out of three of the finalists that were just named are certainly employed.
And that they meet all our qualifications, so, you know, the licensure, I want somebody that's currently working. And some of the nine were not currently employed, from what I could tell, at least quickly looking at it. So those people are not here in this pool, but I didn't know that until today, so I've been a little concerned about who's coming forward. Now, obviously, the preliminary screening committee did a good job, and they figured that out, and we have three different people, so that's... But that's the type of thing I just wish I knew a little earlier, but, you know, it is what it is. We, I mean, the process is where it is, I think, you know, we just move forwards.
Well, there was one particular candidate, without mentioning him, who is currently not employed. This is not one of the ones that was chosen, and he resigned his position. And it took some questioning from the committee to pin that down. And then, when he started explaining it, there's, there's a lot of background reasons why he left that kind of vague. But at the same time, it made some of us rather concerned about his full allegancy to being candid. So, I mean, yeah, those are things we do. That's what committees are supposed to do, keep asking questions.
Anything further? All right, can I report?
I'm going to, I have a section on the MCAS and the Health Committee, which are attached to this report, but I'll reference those later when they run the agenda for me to do a brief presentation on. So in terms of the MCAS, you will be making, you will be voting tonight on whether to use the MCAS at Park. We need to submit that information to the state by Friday. In terms of vining and vaping, Shelley Warren and Pam Chaplin presented a parent, a presentation on vining and vaping. It was an extraordinary presentation where they really did a great job. Vining is, is referring to internet safety and all the programs that the kids, all the apps that the kids are using, as well as how to keep them safe from predators, et cetera. Pam did a great job on that. Then Shelley stepped up and she did vaping, which talked about drug use. It was really, really informative to see what kids are using, how powerful marijuana has become, why people worried about that being addictive, and why it could lead to heroin. So it was a very informative presentation. We had about fifty parents there, and they, they did a great job. It's, it's, it's too bad everybody couldn't have seen it. I thought it was very well done. And I'll hold off on the Health Committee report until it's on the agenda.
Sam, do you have anything?
Yeah, I just have two reports and an announcement. The announcement is that on December twenty-second, we'll be having our winter concert, and it's a really good program, so we invite everyone at home to come join us at seven P.M. on the twenty-second. And the past few weeks, we had our junior, senior semi-formal dance, which was very successful, as well as our senior class play, which was also very successful. So thank you to everyone that helped out with those two things.
Senior class play was terrific.
Thank you.
You did a great job, Sam.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Finance Subcommittee?
We had a meeting this week. Yeah, I know. Okay, let's see. We talked about the budget, and there's a copy on your desk of year-to-date budget so far. We're finding that we're short in legal costs and evaluations, but gas utilities are low, so that's good.
We're gonna see a nice, warm winter.
Yes. The next thing we looked at were, was some benchmark, benchmark data, just for informational purposes, that compared our school to our local schools, and then also our, what is it called? Comparable schools?
Like schools.
Like schools, right. We talked a little bit about our FY seventeen budget, and talked about how all the salary adjustments, or almost all the salary adjustments with the new negotiations is included, already included in that budget, and it has, does not include free kindergarten, the needs of the district, or hea- health curriculum, or anything else. So we need to talk about that more. And any questions?
We have to talk about...
Let's see that. All right. And, okay. And we're gonna have to set an additional special meeting, either December twentieth or twenty-ninth, to vote warrants. And, and then we also had, Blueberry Hill School would like to host a pancake breakfast at the high school, and so we need our full committee's vote on that. It'll be on a Saturday in April two six, two thousand sixteen.
We supported it.
And we supported it, yes. John, can I hear a motion on that?
Okay, I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve use of Blueberry Hill School on a Saturday in April twenty-sixteen for the parent-teacher organization Pancake Breakfast.
Okay, just ask a quick question. You had said it was at the high school. Is it actually a Blueberry?
Oh, it is? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was at the high school.
It is a Blueberry.
Okay, it's at Blueberry.
Yeah, and since our meeting, they have clarified, because they put two dates on their request, so they are requesting April second
Okay.
as their first choice, so.
Okay.
And that's no problem.
It's April second, and it is Blueberry Hill.
Sorry.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? And we need to set the date for
Oh, right.
The meeting for the warrants.
Twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth?
What do you want, during the day or during the...?
During the day would be fine. I'd prefer in the afternoon to give us a chance to make sure the warrant has been reviewed with Christmas Eve and Christmas.
Okay.
So anytime after twelve.
Okay.
So she gives the batch at ten A.M. that day?
Yeah, well...
Would you prefer to be on the twenty-ninth, just to be safe?
The twenty-ninth would be better
Okay.
if we could get a quorum for the twenty-ninth. If not, it's twenty-eighth in the afternoon.
I'm available for you there.
Kim, it might not be available at that time because of Christmas Eve. They don't know exactly when they're gonna get it to us. They're hopeful Wednesday at the end of business, but they're not sure.
I think I'll be here.
I'll be here.
I'm out of the country.
I'm not sure.
What time?
I have a lot of people staying with me.
Oh, you need just four people, right?
That's a good time to leave the house, I guess.
During the day or during...?
Well, yeah, no, during the day, one, two, three, whatever time works for everybody.
I'd do whatever.
I don't know
I cannot be here.
if I am or not.
So there's two of us that are, yes?
Yeah.
Two maybes. John, what did you say?
Well, if you, if you make it to twenty-eighth, I can probably be here. The twenty-ninth, most likely, no.
Okay. I can do the twenty-eighth. Are you good with the twenty-eighth?
Yeah, we just have to have it in the evening or the afternoon, at like three or something.
I can do three. Is three too late for you?
Yes, anytime on the twenty-eighth. I mean, I'm positive.
I'll go if I'm here.
Is that a reasonable time if you're here?
Yeah.
So when?
So we have three and a maybe.
Three P.M. on the twenty-eighth.
And Liz, are you gonna be able to make that?
I don't know. I have to say.
Okay.
Can we?
Well, can I ask, when will we meet? And we'll see.
Three, three o'clock?
Three o'clock on the twenty-eighth. Three confirmed and two maybes.
Okay, so we might have a quorum.
Can I ask for a backup in case the twenty-eighth doesn't work, so we can pay the district bills?
Yes, what is the latest possible date?
Can we not pay them in January?
Well, you can back them up, but, I mean, we would, you can't, I can't wait until January eleventh, which is
Okay.
No, but like Monday, like January second.
So January, so December twenty-ninth doesn't work for fewer people, right?
It doesn't work for many.
And then what about the thirtieth?
I'm available on the thirtieth.
Because it's from today till then.
I've got a very sad New Year's plan. So I'm just here.
You should hear, you should hear ours.
I mean, my problem is I might go away for the week, so I just don't wanna, I could...
So should we do something January fourth?
Sure.
Is that too late?
It is what it is.
Can four people come in at ten A.M. on the fourth?
I could be here.
Is that on Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can do that.
Three P.M. on the fourth? Yeah, that works.
No, like a morning?
Ten, I think, as well.
Ten, just so that you can get it, like you can get it out and done for the day, right?
Yep.
I could do that.
Someone's gonna have to come in earlier to actually check up.
This will be the, this will be the same batch, John. If there's no meeting on the twenty-eighth, then this will be the same batch of warrants from the twenty-eighth. We won't add any to it.
January fourth at ten A.M. is the alternate?
I'm, if, I, I mean, I don't want to volunteer for anything additional, but I'm happy to check them if, that week prior, if you'd like. I can come in.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Well, that's the alternate, so you still wanna...
They'll have already been checked, though, hopefully, unless we cancel the twenty-eighth before then.
Right.
So.
So we're, we're saying the twenty-eighth is three, and then a backup being the fourth.
Yes.
And we definitely have four on the fourth.
So Tom, will you be emailing with the committee regarding confirmation for the twenty-eighth? Or how, how are you all gonna know to confirm for the twenty-eighth?
I think we're just gonna show up and...
No, when will Liz and Russ know? Well, Liz has got people in. Yeah. When will you know?
Oh, no, the next couple. I'll just ask my wife over. I just don't know. I'm not the social calendar like yours.
Can I talk to her? Ask her to go on the twenty-ninth?
Or how about, like, can you guys leave at three thirty on the twenty-eighth?
One thing I think we should talk about, though, at some future meeting, is whether we continue to do warrants this way or other school systems. You don't have a full meeting necessarily if you have to do warrants. I know there was some history about why we started doing that, apparently, but I think we should think about that because we do that over the summer, too. We have meetings just for warrants, and it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense.
I think, I mean, we, we've ended up adding more over the summer than just warrants, but...
All right, cool.
Am I done?
Can I just say a couple things about this, because some people might not have seen this before? So this is a, this is a budget report that Finance Sub receives throughout the course of the year. The columns to the left of the gray columns come out of our financial system. The two gray columns are, the first one are estimates that I calculate as to what I believe would be additional expenses we're gonna incur on a line-by-line basis, and then an estimated ending balance. So I try to be conservatively high in terms of my estimates, with the best information I have available to me, to try to paint, I think, what would hopefully be the worst-case scenario. In terms of utilities, I do use prior year consumption for the months that we don't have actual invoices for yet. So again, there are a lot of projections in here, and this does reflect an ending balance just for the general fund. So as of this report, it says we will have about thirty thousand dollars left over in the general fund at the close of business for FY sixteen. Finance Sub just received it on Friday, which is why it wasn't in your packet, so I just, if anybody comes across any questions, please feel free to give me a call, email me with your questions. I just did want to update you. The other piece, on the FY seventeen budget discussion, we had a conversation about cost of living increases and step increases, so I provided the Finance Sub with an estimate. We have calculated, based on current staffing, about seven hundred and twelve thousand dollars in increased costs in FY seventeen for contractual increases. That doesn't include anybody who might be moving a lane change or moving laterally on the unit-a-salary schedule as they have until December thirty-first to notify the superintendent's office of that potential change. And again, that, that number is preliminary just based on current staffing, but I, I wanted to kind of start putting some numbers together and getting that information of Finance Sub into the school committee.
And it's colas and steps?
That is colas and steps for all units for settled contracts. Again, we are meeting with the nurses, so that, that doesn't really account for any potential changes to their compensation.
I just want to, we'll probably see a change in the substitute one, since the budget was made before we increased the salary recently.
I did try to calculate, based on the cost through the end of the year with a percentage increase.
Yeah.
Instead of a straight calculation, I, I bumped it up, knowing that we have increased instead of it just being historical. I did increase it by about twenty percent more, knowing that that fifteen-dollar increase was approved a couple meetings ago, so.
If anybody's watching, and is this, we should encourage them to apply. I was at one of the schools...
We need more substitute teachers?
I was at one of the schools this week, and there were teachers and staff running around. I felt extremely bad for them, since they were needing subs.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, well, more of a comment. How much overall, just because I know it's broken down by control area in here, are we, how much have we expended on utilities district-wide so far? Do you know that off the top of your head?
They don't.
Okay, I can have it up, but it looks like we're tracking very well.
Yeah, well, natural gas, we don't, we only have in through probably early to mid-November
Right.
for, for actual invoices. So we have very little expended for natural gas so far. I mean, if, based on my recollection, I'd be surprised if it was more than twenty-five or thirty thousand district-wide. But, you know, electricity, it's, it's been on par. Remember, we have new contracts in place for our cost per therm and kilowatt hour this year, so I think we're seeing a slight increase in our overall electricity cost.
Right.
But yeah, so far, our heating expenses are low.
It's looking good.
We'll see how it goes through the rest of the winter.
What, besides, obviously, legal coming in a lot differently than we anticipated, what do you think is the biggest area of concern we need to be watching?
Um, special education.
Okay.
If you look at the evaluation line, we're, we're short there, and legal settlements, we already moved a hundred thousand into that line, and we still have a, a small shortfall there. And, you know, we always keep a close eye on audit district placements, so.
And have those been trending? Just because I don't think that we've been made aware of any sort of trends.
Audit district placements?
Yeah.
Um, there's been some, some, some new ones this, this year that weren't budgeted for, so that's why I'd say it's an area that keeping a close eye on this year.
Do we know what our anticipated circuit breaker is from last year?
We do. It's, it's adjusted, yes. School committee voted, I think, a couple meetings ago when they did one of the
Oh, for the grants and special revenue?
So I want to say this year's appropriation is just under like one point one million.
Okay.
And we had a two hundred thousand, two hundred and thirty thousand carryover from last fiscal year. So we have about one point three five or so budgeted for circuit breaker.
Okay.
Tom, if I could, page seven, I'm looking at it, this just caught my eye. The tech director's salary is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, which I can kind of mind-boggling figure. That's more than we're paying some principals.
Well, that's, that's, there's more than one FTE on that line, John.
How many people?
There are two individuals being paid out of that line.
Okay, all right.
This report unfortunately doesn't capture the number of FTEs.
Okay, okay, thank you for that.
And each one, you'd have to revert back to the budget document.
Now, do those people also service the town?
They do, correct.
But, but we have to carry it in our budget.
When the technology consolidation occurred, they transferred over the funds with the staffing that the town had. So since we've consolidated, I want to say, in FY eleven, we've been carrying those salaries and positions in our budget, correct?
And we only brought over one person
Correct.
in that consolidation.
Okay. Well, if I could, then, just continuing that line out, one sixty-five... Okay. Well, if I could, then, just continuing that line out, uh, one sixty-five, six four nine, and then we go sixty-seven, eighty-nine thousand is encumbered. What's that eight thousand nine hundred ninety-six amount?
So that is, um, the amount that I anticipate being left as of June thirtieth. Our new tech director did not work the entire year. He started, um, in August, or, I wanna say, uh, from when he was hired. We also had budgeted for our previous tech director, who, who no longer is with us, so there's also a discrepancy in terms of that position and what we budgeted.
So, that's like, that's a surplus?
Yeah, in that particular line, for this year, but then we'll have to budget the full twelve months for Nick's salary for FY seventeen.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Seven hundred and twelve thousand.
Yes.
What is that, on a percentage basis?
Uh, yes, I think I actually have that information. Across the districts, it's like two point seven eight.
Two point seven eight?
Where's it, where are you looking? It's not on here. This is a different document that, uh, Finance Sub received, did a by-unit calculation showing FY sixteen base, and then what the steps would be, and then the cola based on the settlement for, uh, FY seventeen.
So the town's looking for something around two and a quarter percent. So level of funding, would we actually be above that?
Yeah, well, what the town did when their budget projection was, they gave us a three percent increase on our salary line, so they gave us about eight hundred thousand dollars in their projection.
Okay.
So, uh, based on this number alone, and that, like I said, there are other contractual expenses that aren't included in here that we don't know of yet, but yeah, it's, it's basically gonna consume all of the projected increase that they planned for in their FY seventeen budget. And remember, that budget document included a, an overall deficit of about five hundred thousand from when Paul, uh, when we had our joint meeting with the select board back in October.
So obviously, you're gonna struggle to figure out how to do kindergarten.
Well, uh, it's preliminary. I mean, I think Admin, we meet on Wednesday, they'll be, we'll be discussing any other requests. We'll be looking at, are there other reductions that, you know, we might be able to include, so...
Okay.
But to answer your question, at this point, it, it's gonna be a challenge to, to include it, uh, at three hundred plus thousand, yes, and meet their, the number that they're putting in their budget.
Okay.
Any other questions for Tom?
Hmm.
Um, subcommittee reports. Michael, did you have anything from legislative?
Very little. Uh, the Senate and the House are both in recess, but you can anticipate when they come back, uh, in the beginning of January, that one of the things they'll be talking about, hopefully at some point this year, will be charters, charter schools. Uh, there's also a ballot question that has been certified and will be on the November sixteenth ballot, which also aims to lift the charter school cap, so something for us to keep an eye on. Um, the governor himself has filed a bill, but, uh, right now, that's all it is. Um, something sort of interesting that we should keep an eye on as well is the governor also filed legislation with about sixty or so changes that will allow municipalities and some school-related items in there to have greater flexibility. Um, and I can certainly look those up and get that information out to everybody. Uh, a lot of it is around, um, a lot of it's around procurement, uh, but there's, uh, and revolving accounts. Um, but greater flexibility for towns, so certainly might affect the budget in some way, in probably what could be considered a good way. Um, other things in there that don't necessarily apply to us, but do apply to the select board, uh, would be, uh, lifting the cap on liquor licenses for the town, allowing municipalities to decide what's right for them. Uh, and just a number of other things, uh, sort of aimed at maintenance, uh, for municipalities, and that's about it. It's pretty slow right now.
Okay. L P V C?
I have a meeting, um, Wednesday night.
Okay. Um, Operations Sub?
Policy.
We gotta, we gotta get back.
Policy.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Operations? Something? Middle school working group?
I have not had.
Any other subcommittee that I've missed? All right, so can we move on to the elementary health proposal?
Yes. Um, attached Chief School Committee report, there's a report on, um, the Health Committee. Uh, I think as we all know, children are exposed to far more these days than they used to be, through TV, through media, uh, and just life experiences. For that reason, there's been a lot of talk over the past couple of years on whether or not we need a health program at the elementary school. A, the Special Programs Committee was formed last year, and it came up through a pa- parent survey that it would be, behoove us to look at having elementary health, so we did that. This year, we surveyed our teachers again as well to talk about health and what it would look like if we did that. It was clear from the teacher's perspective that we definitely need a health program, but the question remained where to fit it into the curriculum and, um, and how much it would cost to fund it. We asked those questions on our survey, and the teachers were mixed. Some felt like they, they were willing to give up, um, a half hour to an hour of instruction a week, and others felt that absolutely not, they could not afford to lose any more time. So the committee came up with a proposal to roll out health in the fourth and fifth grade, where it would be taught during the wind block. The proposal is to add health to the fifth grade next year. It would cost a point two staff position, and it would be one time a week during the wind block for, um, for a p- a part of the year. And then the following year, the fourth grade would roll out for another point two. Uh, the, it would rotate from school to school on a daily basis, and it would be a half-year course, providing half an hour of instruction a week. The, the curriculum needs, we'd, we'd need to look at curriculum across the board. If we add fourth and fifth grade health, we're going to have to look at redoing our middle school and high school health, too, because that would impact what's being taught at certain grades. So we would need to develop curriculum. We, we are ha- we're having the teachers all meet right now to talk about what they think the pressing needs are for fifth grade, um, health, and they're going to bring that information back to the committee. We al- it has budget implications, and the budget implications would be the following. We would like to add a point two health position to the budget for FY seventeen for grade five health. In the following year, FY eighteen, we'd like to add another point two position to teach health to the, um, fourth graders, and then we need funds for materials in seventeen and eighteen. We don't have a dollar figure, because we need some, some of work done to design curriculum and choose materials. So it's our hope that the school committee will support this initiative. The Health Committee was comprised of numerous teachers that were, um, regular ed, health, PE, administration, and we feel very strongly that it would benefit our students to add health to the curriculum. Questions?
All right, I'll start with a question. Um, with the wind block, we already have students being pulled for, um, different varieties of different reasons, so how will that impact those students?
It would be one time a week. The principal felt that, the principals felt that it could be scheduled in a way that wouldn't impact services, because the big thing is, um, the students who are being serviced and pulled during that time, but they felt that if we know early enough, the I E Ps can be written and modifications can be made so that students will still receive the services that they need, because we wanted to make sure that all students are exposed to health and none miss it.
Okay. Ross, and then you have...
Um, so you're looking for a vote tonight?
No.
Oh, okay.
It, it will be part of budget discussion, but I want to inform you that that will be a budget implication.
Okay, 'cause I think it seems like probably a reasonable idea, but I just, you know, we got kindergarten and all the other things, so I'm not sure. We gotta prioritize some of this stuff.
Right. This is just to mull over and to give you, um, lots of thought before we get to budget season.
Okay, thanks.
To update you on the committee.
Thank you.
Well, no, I'm just thinking the wind block, I know that some kids, I, I'm just thinking about the fifth grade wind block currently at one of the elementary schools, and I know there are kids that are involved in band, and I think they get pulled out during the wind block, so that only leaves four other blocks, and then I believe they get pulled out for, um,
Orchestra?
One other, either, well, they can't, they would be in orchestra and band. I, I don't know if they, I can't tell if they get pulled out one other, which leaves
It could be.
three wind blocks for them to get that extra help that they need, so I'm just trying to, I, 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 I'm glad that we get to mull it over and that we get to have conversations about it, 'cause I, I just am trying to, I, I, I agree with the teachers that are trying to figure out where to fit it in, 'cause I see the wind block being used very effectively in the fifth grade over at Blueberry.
Yep.
And I feel like taking one day out of it right now, from what I can see, would be, just, just from my own personal experience, not from, you know, I guess I'd like to hear from everyone about that, but I feel like taking away one wind block, and I, it would be kind of, it would hurt a little bit, and, um, I guess you have to weigh.
But it's only for a third of the year.
Where?
Well, so that, that's what I was gonna ask, is it like a ten-week period?
The way that the council goes, so, is that right, Murray?
Half the year.
'Cause I, I was on helping for last fall meeting, so...
Half the year.
So they'd only get it for half the year?
But they're on trimesters.
I thought it was a third, a third, and a third.
Because you have three elementary schools?
That's my understanding, but I was not at the last meeting, so I'll have to let Murray.
Okay.
So it would only be a...
So that would be a question about whether it's really a half a year, because the elementaries are on trimest, are on tri.
I'll confirm that, but my notes say half, half the year.
John?
Would this be a good time to talk about lengthening the day for elementary school? There's, uh, they don't have the problem of, uh, you know, interscholastic sports teams and schedules and lining up with, you know, other schools, uh, and I'm just, this is off the top of my head, we're trapped by a, uh, you know, a time period when we see, and there's a growing need for this, I think, I support this idea, um, that we need to introduce health, and it would be time well spent.
We're locked into a schedule that would be something that would be brought up during contract negotiations, and we still have two years left on this contract, so the question is how to meet the needs of the teachers and the students, and this was what we felt was the best compromise, given all the information that we had from the teachers. They really feel pretty strongly about giving it something up. Something's going to have to be given up if we fit it in now. We don't have a choice of extending the day right now.
It's out of the question?
It's out of the question.
And we can't even raise it with the impact bargaining, for example?
It's been raised. It, it won't happen.
Yeah.
Ross?
The, um, Elementary Health Committee was compro- comprised of health and PE teachers. It doesn't, doesn't look like you had any other classroom teachers on it, so do we...
Do we have any classrooms?
I didn't make the last meeting. I'm the first one.
I apologize. It might have been Health and PE, and we surveyed the regular ed teachers.
Okay.
Yeah, we definitely didn't realize it was just the, and the...
I can't name a regular ed teacher.
So the survey showed that the classroom teachers were concerned about taking some of the time, but generally in favor. Is that, that's a general...
Correct. That was the largest hurdle the committee had to get over, was how we could possibly fit this in.
I still think of the...
I think the teachers across the board, classroom teachers, agreed it's absolutely necessary, but out of about, about twenty-five that were surveyed, eleven said absolutely don't pull them from my class, um, so...
How about the wind block, though? Have they seen this proposal?
The principals have talked to them about it, and I think they, they favor this.
There's a more positive, uh, reaction to that, okay.
Yeah.
I like that it's limited, that it's not the entire year, but I, I do see a need for help.
Mm-hmm.
Just trying to figure out where to put it in.
We used to have it when I was in elementary school.
Those were the days.
Those were the days. It wasn't that long ago.
Um, oh, they were, though.
They were. Uh, you know, and obviously, I think that, like many things, uh, it fell victim to budget, and it fell victim to the increasing, uh, you know, nature of what we have to do in the classrooms on a daily basis, but, you know, one of the things that I think we're seeing a lot right now, you know, and quite honestly, it's something that Alex Grants brought up a lot, is a lot of students in, you know, maybe not so much Longmeadow, maybe in Longmeadow, having access to prescription drugs, uh, you know, fueling an opiate epidemic. Uh, you know, we see it year over year with, uh, just, just, uh, you know, just the, the media and its sort of impact on people's mental and physical health in a lot of ways, um, you know, body image issues, things like that. We, you know, get to a point where we have to have a presentation to our s-, you know, to our parents about vaping and vining. Uh, you know, all of these things, I think, are opportunities we're missing, you know, in the classroom to address, and so I, I think, I certainly see the value of the wind block, and I've been a big supporter and advocate of it, and Kim, I think you're right, we have to weigh, we have to weigh it out, and, you know, yes, it's important, and it's having tremendous impact. This is also important. It will have tremendous impact, so you kinda have to figure out, how do you implement this, given the constraints of the, you know, what teachers have to do in a day, and make it work, and I think that, uh, you know, you know, sort of, uh, my, my hat's off to you for figuring out a way to phase it in and try to make it work, because I think it is important, um, you know, that we educate the whole student, not just, you know, not just academically.
All right, so you also have the MCAS and PAR discussion?
Right. There's also, um, some notes or reports to you that's attached to my school committee report on the MCAS. Uh, we started with the administrative team. As you know, tonight, you need to vote on whether we're going to give the PAR or the MCAS next year. That has to be given to the Commissioner of Education by Friday, so we didn't have a big window of time to actually pull this information together. First, we started with the administrative team to ask what the pros and cons of each of the tests were, and the MCAS pros, uh, why switch to a new test when another one is coming? Switching two times within three years would not benefit students, since there are too many transitions. We need test results because we want comparisons from previous years. Community supported going with the MCAS prior to this, and the PAR data comes out very late, and it's, it limits, it has limited usefulness. The PAR pros, PAR would give us practice for a new test. We would be held harmless from the test results. It takes the pressure off. New tests will have questions similar to the PAR. Students could practice with an online assessment before it counts. We could teach students how to take the test that is coming. This would push the testing window off until later in the year to give schools flexibility and more time to teach prior to the test. The state wants all the testing on computers by two thousand and eighteen, so practice will be beneficial. So after the administrative team had this dialogue, we decided that we needed to get way in, um, have the teachers weigh in and get their feedback. So each of the principals had a, um, had a staff meeting, collected data, and I've reported out by schools what, what their feedback was. Uh, the middle schools, they're both pro MCAS at the middle schools. Again, they say it's late in the game to switch. The high school has to take the MCAS, so there's consistency for students in grade eight, and we can use data for comparisons. Center School was the one that leaned toward the PAR test. PAR is positive, and that will be held harmless, so try it. It helps prepare for the MCAS two point O, provides a longer window to teach. Similar districts took a bump up in the scores with the PAR. Scheduling flexibility helps special education services. Teachers are curious about PAR, and our comparison districts, most are PAR districts. Um, but our, our collaborative districts, most are going to be taking the MCAS next year, so that, so the local, um, neighborhoods, most of them are taking the MCAS, recommending it. Blueberry favors the MCAS. It would like to compare MCAS to MCAS for the new math program. Tracking student growth is not possible if we go to PAR. It's not, um, the fact that it's not being, um, a timed test is a benefit for students. Parents can opt out of PAR, would a lot do this. Uh, there'd be concerns about demands on the staff if we switch, having to prepare and learn a new test. Would, we would need to switch the curriculum in order to prepare students for PAR during the year. How seriously would students take PAR if it doesn't count, and there are too many knowns with the PAR and MCAS two point O. Wolf Swamp also favored the MCAS, had a lot of the same, um, same factors as, as Blueberry. There was anxiety about moving to the PAR, concern about saying with the MCAS, would we fall behind other districts due to not taking the PAR? Who is creating the new test? It could be very different than even PAR. PAR takes less time, and there's a comfort with A- A- MCAS, and there's anxiety about changing now. So this information was all brought back to the administrative team. We reviewed what we had discussed previously. We reviewed what the elementary schools, um, uh, provided us for, uh, uh, elementary and middle schools and high school, and we are recommending to you that we save the MCAS for all the reasons that I just reviewed with you.
Fine by me.
You don't have an entry for high school. Is it because only one high school, well, uh, high school only has to take?
Right.
Will they have to take the MCAS?
The high school has to take the MCAS.
And that's the sophomore year test?
Yes.
Do they like it? Do they like the MCAS, the high school people?
Uh, I, I don't know the answer to that question.
Excuse me.
I think, I think they feel that they're ready to prepare the kids well, to do well on the MCAS. The, the results have been fantastic. There have been no complaints from the high school. Michael?
Are we, I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to support MCAS, uh, and support the recommendation, and I think that that is, uh, the right recommendation for a number of reasons, but, you know, as you kinda mentioned, uh, throughout your comments, uh, and the comments that were co- collected from staff, MCAS two point O is, is obviously gonna be a technology-based test. Uh, the commissioners made that very clear. Um, probably not all that different from PAR at the end of the day. Are we concerned at all about our students' ability to take tests in electronic format? And the second part of that question is, if by twenty eighteen, we need to have every test being taken on a computer or a device, are we at a level from a sort of inventory perspective to do that well?
It, it's a good question. We did talk about whether or not they would benefit from the practice online, and that's definitely advantageous, but also, we're not sure... But also, we're not sure what the PAR's going to look like. We don't know if they'll really have the test ready by 218. It gives us quite a timeframe to practice and to use online assessments in school. Uh, we'll, we'll have a whole year. We also, they talk about the technology and fixing the techno, technological glitches that are with the PAR, but they don't talk about fixing the questions. And that's still a concern I have. Very confusing for students, some of the questions are inappropriate for the grade level, so I think they need more time to do that. And I think by presenting PAR to students, even though it's advantageous to be online, it's very frustrating for them, because I don't think the test is at a place that's benefiting the students yet.
Okay.
Do we have any tests, maybe, maybe sue you a note? Do we have any tests right now that the students, three through eight, that they take online? Is that Ames Web?
Not, Ames Web, some of it is online, yes.
Some of it's online?
It's nowhere near what the PAR would expect out of them.
We'd make, make, need to make a conscious effort. We already aligned the technology benchmarks so that they match the PAR, so that the students are learning the skills, but as they move toward the MCAS 2.0 and we have a better sense, I think that they can embed that into the curriculum, and it gives us time to do that, rather than rushing into it next year before we have time to, next spring, before we have time to fully train the students how to do it.
Yeah, does, sorry, does Google, I know Google has a lot of capabilities that I don't even know about, and I know I put something in for survey. Does Google have the abilities for teachers to create a test online that their students can take so that they can practice, like, and the unit tests or things like that, so that kids can practice taking tests over the next year?
Yeah.
Yeah. So if, okay.
Ross?
So I think the online component is a big part of it, but what I've heard from some of the area schools that are doing MCAS right now, um, I think some of them might switch to PAR, and, and my understanding is because, one, you have this kind of old harmless year, and two, if MCAS 2.0 is very similar to PAR, which is one thing they've, the Commissioners kind of making fairly clear, um, some of the other schools that we are compared to have been taking PAR. So if we jump in, when it's actually mandated, we go to MCAS 2.0, and if it is more like PAR, then I think some people are concerned that maybe we're going to fall behind. That's the only argument I've heard on the other side. I don't know how you feel about that. I know that's basically what Center and Wolf Swamp's concerned about.
I, I still think the test is very frustrating for the students because of the questions. I, I, I have more of a problem with the questions than the technology personally. I think they're inappropriate, they're multi-layered questions that the students haven't been really trained to, to, um, answer. So I think that they need to fix those, and it would be less frustrating. There's definitely the advantage of going online, they'd have that experience, but I don't think it outweighs the frustration it will cause the students to take a test that, um, it hasn't been properly vetted yet.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I think we have no great answer here, because if we stay with MCAS, we might be, be behind the eight ball. If we go to PAR and then MCAS 2.0 isn't as similar to PAR as they're saying, then we may have switched to a test that's not really that similar to MCAS 2.0. So it's, you know, I think.
But we would have all next year to prepare, to make sure students are being trained online, to move to some online assessments. That could certainly be a priority of the district to make sure that we're ready for that without jumping in the spring.
Yeah. Good.
Any other questions or comments about, um, MCAS and PAR?
Nope.
I just want to thank Marie and whoever else helped put this together, because I think it's very helpful for us. For me to come to a decision based on all the feedback that you gathered. Thank you.
Good.
All right, so can we please have a motion?
Sure. Um, I move on the recommendation of the administrative team that the school committee approved the administration of the MCAS test in the spring of 2016.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Warrants?
Okay. Um, I move that the school committee approved the warrant batch number 2200 of the school lunch FY 16 fund dated December 18th, 2015, in the amount of $224.61.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I move the school committee approved the warrant batch number 3063 of the general fund for fiscal year 2016, uh, dated December 18th, 2015, in the amount of $574,935.93.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Minutes, Kim?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the November 23rd, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the executive session for the November 23rd, 2015 school committee meeting as presented.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we do have executive session scheduled, um, so may I have a motion, please?
Uh, I move that the school committee adjourn to executive session for the purposes of strategy as it relates to pending litigation and strategy as it relates to non-union personnel of superintendent, not to reconvene into open session. This motion requires a roll call vote.
Aye.
Hold on, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, roll call vote?
Aye.
John Fitzgerald, aye.
Michael Clark, aye.
Janet Robinson, aye.
Kim King, aye.
Michelle Gretzky, aye.
Ms. Cooper, aye.
All right, so thank you very much for joining us. We will be here again live on Thursday, beginning at 5:00 PM, for the interviews of the three superintendent finalist candidates. Thank you and have a good evening.